Okay, I would like to call the order, excuse me. The meeting of April ninth for the meeting of the zoning board of appeals. I would like to introduce the board by name. On my left is Steve Fischkopf, who was a regular member. My name is Bill Pickett, I'm the vice chair, acting as chair tonight. On my right is a regular member, Dennis Crowe. And we have an alternate, Dylan Stella, and he will be on the regular board tonight. Uh, excuse me, four votes are needed for an application to be approved. And this is in accordance with state statutes, a simple majority is not sufficient. All actions will be taken by road call. The town planner will read the legal notice as advertised in the source. After the applications have been read, anyone who wishes to withdraw or postpone his or her's application is free to do so. If there is no one who wishes to withdraw or postpone, we will then go forward with the applications in the order in which they appear on the agenda. For each application, the applicant or his or her's representative will be promoted to a panelist. They will then state his and hers, his or hers, name and address for the record, and the nature and the reason for the appeal. The applicant may screen share all application materials or request assistance from staff. Any and all, all items, plans, or picture shown to the board are considered exhibits. And all exhibits must be provided in PDF or paper copy to the town staff. After the presentation is made by the applicant, we will entertain questions from members of the board and then entertain questions from the audience. Attendees will raise their hand and wait to be called upon. After questions, those speaking in favor of the application may raise their hand and be heard. Then those in opposition may raise their hand and be heard. Be sure to state your name and address before you speak. Following any comments by the board or public, the applicant will have an opportunity for closing comments. The public hearing portion of the application can be closed and the board can deliberate. Upon closing of the public hearing, no new correspondence or comments can be received by the board. In most instances, we will make our decision immediately after each hearing. You may stay to hear the results or call the land use office in the morning. You will be notified by mail and all decisions are published. I would like to call upon Maria to read the first application.
First, we're going to do the election of officers quickly.
Oh, we are, so we're not going to do that until the end?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you do that now and then we'll all read.
Alright. So, I would like to make a motion, I guess, for the elections of the officers chair will be Richard Gilbert and vice chair will be me, William Pickett. Do I have a motion?
I'll move, but I want discussion afterwards, so I'll move, make the motion.
Second.
Okay, so, okay, question, point of order. I don't know the answer to this, we only have three regular members here. Are we able to make that election?
Yes.
Only one of the people is not.
Yes, yes.
We are able to do it.
Yes, the only reason why we're redoing it is because it didn't really, it didn't get officially in the minutes last month. So, because it was a discussion and nobody, so we just wanted to put it officially. Yep, you're fine, great.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay.
Okay.
We have new.
No.
We have new elections.
Yeah, now I can read the, uh.
Oh, yes.
The legal. Legal notice, Madison zoning board appeals, Madison, Connecticut. Notice is hereby given that the board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, April ninth at seven PM. The meeting will be conducted as a hybrid meeting in meeting room A, Town Campus, Eight Campus Drive, and remotely online as a Zoom webinar. Application twenty-four oh three, one twenty-eight Island Avenue, map sixteen, lot one thirty-three, zone R four. Owner applicant, the Madison Beach Club, Inc. Variance request to section three point six to allow three point five feet setback from property line where thirty feet is required for AC condensers. Application includes a coastal site plan. Application number twenty-four dash oh four, sixty-seven Dunn Lane, AKA Sixth First Street, map thirty-one, lot forty-eight, R two zone. Owner applicant, Frank Maroli and Deborah Walthorn. Variance request to section twelve point six, expand a non-conforming structure. Application includes a coastal site plan review. Application twenty-five dash five, thirty-one Parker Avenue, map fifteen, lot fifty-one, zone R five. Owner applicant, Ilona B. Marsh, trustee. Variance request to section three point six D to allow nine point two feet west and nine point six feet east, where nine point two feet west and nine point six feet east exist. And twelve feet and twelve feet are required to reconstruct a smaller FEMA compliant house on existing footprint in section two point seventeen to allow a critical coastal resource setback of twenty point seventy feet, where twenty point seventy feet exists and fifty feet is required. Application includes a coastal site plan. Application twenty-four dash six, twenty-seven Fort Path Road, map thirty-seven, lot twenty-nine, zone R one. Owner applicant, Richard and Isabel Han. Variance request to section three point six D to allow twenty-six feet west where thirty feet is required for propane tanks and section three point six D to allow twenty-two feet east where thirty feet is required for a generator. Application includes a coastal site plan. Further details, including application materials, are posted on the town website, www dot madison ct dot org, under the calendar link to meetings. Questions and or comments can be emailed to landuseoffice@landuse@madisonct.org up to twenty-four hours in advance of the meeting. This dated this twentieth day of March, twenty twenty-four, Richard Gilbert Chair. This was published twice in the source on March twenty-eighth and once on March fourth. First application.
Okay, we will proceed with the first application, twenty-four oh three, one twenty-eight Island Avenue. And do we have a presentation by the applicant?
We do. Uh, good evening, thank you. I'm Michael Salzberg, I live at eighty-five Ferris Street in Guilford for the record. I'm here for the applicant, the Madison Beach Club, Inc. With me tonight are Dave Allen, who is the president, Gary Leonard, who's our architect, and somewhere in the Ethernet, we may see Chuck Mandell.
Yes, I moved him over.
Who's the civil engineer who prepared the camp application. If it's, okay, I would like to sit down because then we're at eye level and I'm not looking from an eye angle. Uh, thank you, if it's a problem for anyone.
No, that's fine.
Um, this, this is one of our less complicated applications. It is for the purpose of removing four, I think altogether, air conditioning condensers on the east side of the Beach Club along Island Avenue. Sort of almost at the sound and then moving north a little bit. It's in the area that is used by the club as men's room and ladies' room predominantly. And the bar, if we haven't enough money to finish this project. It's a building that was built after the hurricane thirty-eight and it's been here ever since. It's non-conforming here in particular and probably on both sides. But it's done well, except it's hot. And we've managed that with window unit air conditioners, which are in fact larger than what we're putting in, noisy and can, and inefficient sadly. And that's what, what brings us here. Because the, the window units, which stick out about as far, if not more, technically don't require a legal setback like we're doing. But the same thing we're putting in does, and that's again why we're here. The, beyond that, that's it, that's the whole application. And it may help if you see, Maria, can you put up?
I see, yeah, I'm getting there.
Yeah, sort of one of the exciting views from Island Avenue of the current units. While we're waiting, I can read into the record, because you don't need a lot to envision this. There's, and these are in your, in the packet. The first is a, is a letter from Stephen Molly Cornell, who live across the street, a little, almost on the corner, so they have a Middle Beach Road address, but they, they look at these condensers in that part of the club. And they write, dear commissioners, we live at five Middle Beach Road, which is directly across the street from the Madison Beach Club, and the air conditioning condensers, which are the subject of the Beach Club's variance application, appearing as the first item on the agenda for April ninth. We urge the board to approve this application. It will result in a more pleasing view, because these units almost disappear, a more pleasing view and a substantial reduction in what little sound has been coming from the existing removable units. Thank you for your attention to this, Stephen and Molly Cornell, five Middle Beach Road, Madison, Connecticut. The second letter is from Jeff and Leslie Thornberry, who live next door. They're the next house to the north on Island Avenue, again facing the Beach Club. And they write, dear commissioners, we live at one twenty-seven Island Avenue, which is directly across the street from the Madison Beach Club and the air conditioning condensers, which are the subject of, of this Beach Club application. That application is the first item on the agenda of April ninth, as if you didn't know. And Leslie and I hope that the board will approve this application, which in our opinion would result in a dramatic improvement over the existing noisy, leaking, removable air conditioning units. And there you see them, if they're in, yeah, they are.
They're from out here.
Yeah, showing, they're, they're not terribly efficient either. But that's, that's the state of the art at the moment.
That's the existing one, right?
That's existing, yeah. And then if we could switch to, let's the locations that were these, these are wall mounted, you see them all over, condensers. And probably stick out a little less than the, than the temporary ones or the supposedly removable ones. And that's their location and size. And the reason they're shown in, in that vibrant color is so you can see where they are, because in the end they're going to be painted to match the Beach Club and you won't know they're there. And that's really, yeah, I'm sorry.
Let me ask a question at this point. I didn't understand exactly what that meant, that's not a three D print, so I can't tell where that really is. I mean, I see, looks like something's mounted on a fence, so.
No, yeah, it's, that's just the location, it's behind the fence. They're all mounted against the wall.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we have cuts of, of what we can show.
And over on the right, one's above the other.
One, right, underneath an existing fire escape that's already there, so.
They're set way back, yeah.
Got it, okay, thank you.
That was just because the next, there's another picture which you, you can't tell where they are. This just shows it in plan and gives dimensions for locations.
Well, and the real goal was if we showed them as we intend them to be, you wouldn't see them. So think of this as for, for demonstration purposes.
There's a cut of the.
There's, that's what the unit looks like. Looks bigger in the cut, yeah.
Yeah, that's a.
So you have two on the ground, pretty much ground level and one ready. Yeah, we'll raise them up off the ground some. And we will make them removable so that should there be a hurricane warning, we can get a lot of them to prevent damage.
Theoretical question, because you have two point four acre, right? This is one of the only places where it's.
There's a limitation on the distance they could be from the heads in the, in the building, it's about, I'm I'm going to pull a number out of the air, because I should know, but I think it's like ninety feet is the maximum. But given all the, this is about the only place, when you have the roof, which we've looked at alternatives, putting it on the roof, they become much more visible when you put them up.
We should put all three below the fence line?
Um, the, we would prefer not to, because it will, it meant the number that have to come out should there be a hurricane.
Might add, we are in a, in addition, number one, we've got a zero critical membership. And so, anything that ends up being, even remotely, unsidely, we'll hear about. And maybe torches and placards for all.
The person smiling there. Yeah, it's the one that gets it.
Phone's ringing already.
The, the, the other thing about the, the, the situation of the Beach Club here is that it is in a residential zone, it's thereby, not initially is a non-conforming use because of how old it is. And it's also now a special exception as a club, which means that we ultimately have to have planning and zoning permission to do this, your permission, ACA's permission. We visited with the ACA guys and this is where, in the end, they thought would be the most pleasing and appropriate location for these.
Maria, I think in there, there's also a, another cut sheet for a cover to put over the top of these units to make them even less objectionable. This, so we would intend to do this, at least on the one that's visible underneath the fire escape.
So, in addition, of course, to all the people I've mentioned that we've had to go before, there is the matter of the, the and so we've in fact submitted a coastal site plan that Chuck Mandell in his shop prepared. And that has come back with a comment that there's no adverse effect. It's, it's a little hard to see how it could, but, but it doesn't. So that as, as far as we can tell, we've covered our bases here. We have conferred and frankly had the assistance of the staff, which is valuable. And I believe that there, there is no staff issue with what it is we are proposing to do. And that is our presentation, unless you've got other questions.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Um, can I, can I ask you?
Yeah, let me just say, now we're going to go to the stage where we'll ask questions.
Well, what I was going to ask is that, at the presentation, we go through the, the application itself.
See, we, we can do, the app itself.
If she, if Maria can bring it up on the screen.
Because the legal notice essentially says it all.
Yeah, so.
There we are.
That's okay.
I'm the agent.
So, see, we leave thirty feet to about three and a half feet. Okay, and the hardship, all those other items are C attached, so it's, it's going to look attached real quick. So, basically says that building can't be moved, locating farther from the property line is impossible. Condensers replacing, wind amount of units. Project is presented to ACA, which occurred with the project site here. We don't too far quieter. So, I think that's pretty much says what you vocalized. So, that's okay, and this.
There's a zoning table.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the, oh, the other thing about us, in addition to having to, to confer with all of these agencies that we've mentioned, we also have a lot of neighbors. And so our, the cost of mailing these notices was something we noticed, as a matter of fact. But we did that and we've supplied such a different mailing to the staff. And I, I think we've covered our base.
Are there any other questions by the board?
I, so, like, lengthwise, area wise, how do the new units, like, parent, feel? I'm older, I mean, that's, like, I think you mentioned in the application that it's less obtrusive.
Yes.
Is that correct? So, like, is it like smaller, like, area wise?
Well, we have at least three window units, four if we go one bar, which we do sometimes. All of those project at least a foot to eighteen inches from the window. And they're about thirty inches, thirty-two inches wide. So, we're going to three units, which are in the neighborhood of a foot by about thirty inches. So, it's, it's equivalent in size, pretty much, to what's there now. And they're going to be stacked, so the coverage certainly is not increased. Two of them will be stacked.
Okay, so, first thing that came to my mind when I, when I read this was, three and a half feet from the road seems it's close to traffic type issue, but.
It's actually further, further from the road, sorry, sorry to interrupt.
No, that's all right, I was just going to say, you've got a fence there anyhow.
We're going to extend the fence a little bit so that it goes, wraps around the fire escape. But it's, it's well inside the fence, it's, the building is practically on the lot line. But the lot line is, you know, a ways back is typical of the road right ways from the edge of the road itself. Yeah, the actual, the site plan actually shows that.
Any other questions by the board? Okay, any, any public comments from any wish, from anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application?
I'm in favor, these are Douglas heating cooling system.
Please stick your name and address, please.
I'm Frank Merlo, I live in Clinton. I had these put in my house, I, I have a Lennox system and it dropped my heating bills down from sometimes from a thousand dollars in December to, I haven't hit over three hundred, over four hundred dollars since I've got these put in. They're really efficient, they've made my whole house much more evenly heated. And I also had, I have air conditioning, which I never had. So, yeah, I want all of these things, they're great, they're really great.
Any other comments to speak in favor? Okay. Any comments from the public wishing to speak opposing the application? There are any further questions by the board? Yes. Would anybody like to introduce any correspondence into the record by name and date? I think you, I think you read that already.
I did, I can provide coffee.
Sorry.
But they're in, they're in your file.
They're in the file.
Yeah, that's fine. All right, any final com- comments from the applicant?
If, we can't talk to anybody else.
Yeah. Okay, I need a motion to close the public portion of the hearing to, to deliberate the application. So moved. Second, second. Okay. All right, so we have to deliberate here, so who would like to speak first?
I do, I, I personally don't see the problem with this, it's, you know, like, as I said earlier, the my first concern was traffic safety, but I think it's already, it's already a fence, nobody's hitting that, you know? And it's, it's back far enough, I think, that, you know, it's, it's almost like somebody's hitting that, they're hitting the house, the building, you know? It, it is a hardship, there's nowhere else really to put it, and it's a very minor variance that I don't, I don't have a problem with.
I agree with Dennis, I can't add anything more to it.
Yeah, I have to agree, it's, it's a relatively intrusive, I mean, you could even argue it might be a reduction of, of what we're reaching because of like maybe not a marginal size difference, but I mean, I mean, really, it's basically like the same thing as the previous tenants. So, yeah, I have to, it's pretty straightforward.
You're the last one.
No. No, I don't see any issue, but if you could have moved it three and a few feet around the backside, I would have said, hey, maybe why don't you move it there? But give me the limitations for where you can actually put them, I don't see any issue.
Okay, we've all spoken, do I have a motion to close the deliberation and request a motion to vote? Okay, we've all spoken, do I have a motion to close the deliberation and request a motion to vote?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Second, okay. Who would like to make a motion and state their reasons for approval or disapproval?
Okay, I will. So, I move we approve application twenty-four point oh-three, one twenty-eight Island Avenue. With Madison DJ Club, request of variance to section three point six to allow three and a half setback from property line, thirty, thirty foot support aircraft, aircraft. In fact, I was in that industry for a long time, he's in there. Air conditioning, condensers. And the reason being that there's no sufficient other place to put this and it's a very minor variance will enhance the, you know, usage, well, without an impact on the community. And it's approved by AKA. Yeah, also. In addition.
Wait, did you wanna?
All construction, but however, all construction must be in compliance to the plan submitted and upon acceptance of conditions approved from planning and zoning. Doing the CSP in the same motion.
No.
Okay. All those in favor?
Do we have a second?
Pass second.
Oh, I'm sorry, second. All those in favor of approving the variance?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the ayes have it and congratulations. Oh. Yeah, okay. And internationally, the board finds that the coastal site plan application is consistent with the goals and policies.
We'd have to vote on it, you'd have to make a motion.
Oh, that's right, gotta make a motion on that.
Did you wanna review it at all?
Yeah, do you want, I do wanna see.
I'm sorry.
Can you bring it up on the screen? Got the same location, that's good.
Chuck wanna speak at all?
Okay, all of them.
If anyone here.
No, oh, I think Chuck Vandell, agent for the applicant, we did get the deep report and there was no, no adverse impacts to coastal resources. And we are reducing the actually impervious surfaces as discussed. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to, to approve the coastal site plan?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, congratulations.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Yes, that was our goal.
Much appreciated.
Okay.
What are we hearing next?
Okay, we'll move on to the second application, twenty-four oh-four sixty-seven Dudley Lane, AKA Sixth First Street. So who will be making the presentation? Okay, state your name and.
Deb, if you could just come up and stand over here, because the microphone for this is over here, it'll pick up better. Oops. There we go. Yeah.
Where, there's a cottage, your name, state your name. Hawthorne. Twenty-five Valley Road, recent.
Oh, my address, twenty-five Valley Road included.
The cottage on Dudley Lane, I mean, on First Street in Young's Village, needs total repair, so we're looking to replace that structure. It's actually going to be smaller than what's there to accommodate the back line. It sits on the, sits on the order and we're gonna pull it back by shrinking. Really, the variance was just for bringing the cottage ridge line to center to get rid of the shed because it makes, the shed roof part makes the property walls too small for proper windows and doors. So we're only looking to make it closer to code as far as the height. And we're removing a shed that's there, it's not going back, just, I think that's what we're looking for. Just to, so the cottage is only gonna be raised about two feet and it's substantially lower than our neighbors. That's all we're looking for.
Okay, would you wanna go through the application?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You wanna read the, look at the application, the site plan, the plans, which one?
You know, I, I think probably we could go through all three.
Okay.
So.
Let's start with the application.
Preferably the application first. Okay, demo existing non-conforming rebuild?
It's actually on a smaller footprint, isn't it?
It will be, to accommodate.
I think right now, so I don't write on that property line.
It's on the, well, I think, I don't know, it's.
It's a foot and a half off.
Yeah, but we're gonna, we're gonna decrease it, so it's less.
So, right here, the variance requested. This is non-conforming structure. It's not clear here what that means.
The cottage.
Section two point six is the non-conforming.
Right, but it's entire list of, you know, twelve, six, one, two, three, so, right?
Right.
So, or is it A, B, C, I don't know, anyhow, that was the thing, so. What? What, what explicitly is the variance here, just?
Was just to change the ridge line to, to get rid of the shed because the shed comes too low to putting proper doors and windows. It's really all it is. And then we're shrinking, we ended up shrinking the back line just to accommodate the neighbors' request to get it off. So we're just shrinking it, you know, for two.
Okay, so is it gonna be, it's gonna be not exactly in the same footprint, it's gonna be a little less?
Less.
All right, because on the application, it's a.
It's, it's less smaller.
Yeah, it's a little bit smaller. Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely, it's a reduction. And, and it says here, you're gonna also put it up on peers, right?
Yeah, that was, I think that's a requirement now.
Yeah, okay.
So that's, yeah, that's why we, it's better.
Okay, but I guess the twelve, six.
Hold on, I have to stop sharing so I can get to the.
The whole bit is non-conforming, I guess that's why you would list the entire section.
Let me get the regulation up, I have to stop sharing to do so, so otherwise I'm busy.
Yeah.
Built this place, there are no zoning laws.
And, and the whole.
Yeah.
Division is one property and how do you define how much that they own? You know, as a.
Well, we did get a survey.
Side survey.
Yeah.
Yeah, nonetheless, the, the zoning is written for a lot.
So twelve, section, section twelve is non-conforming uses. Section twelve point six is a specific section in section twelve. It's a subsection, no building which does not conform to the requirements of the regulations regarding building height limit area with lot coverage, percentage of lot coverage, required yards and parking facilities shall be enlarged unless such a large portion conforms to the regulations applying in the district which is located. So the building, we all know that it's, that's the section is twelve point six. The section is twelve, she's asking for twelve point six.
Twelve, six, okay.
Yes.
So, I mean, technically speaking, you're not enlarging, but you are raising the height minimum.
Yeah, we're bringing it up to the opinion.
Mostly due to, is that, so, female requirement?
Way, yeah, we're way below, it's building codes, yes.
Yeah. Okay, all right, so it's gonna need building code. Need building code, it has to be. Yeah, okay, so.
I also noticed that here is that you're demolishing the shed.
I'm taking that out.
So you're taking that out, so I guess you could say as it states here, you're reducing the non-conformity.
Yep.
Yeah, okay, that's good.
Okay.
Any other questions by the board?
Well, we gotta see the other.
Okay.
The other, sorry, I think this, this part's clear, yeah.
And that's it, this is the signature.
Signatures, yeah. Now, this one I had questions about the entry. It says there's a nail in the utility pole that is your benchmark. I, Maria, you probably see that all the time, it just sounds really.
Because there's not much to go by with those because, you know, it's one large piece of property and they really want their own property lines, so.
It's kind of funny though, the utility pole could be moved. So, okay. So there's no change in setbacks or anything else? I, clarify for me the bit about, you're gonna be building smaller as opposed to building on the same footprint?
Ninety-eight percent will be on the footprint, we're just not building on that back, thinking. We could, but I think it wouldn't be, it would be adverse for the neighbors.
You're not building on the back what?
The back line, not property. That's the way the building sits, but what we're gonna do is shrink it, so it's not on the property.
You're just gonna move the, the back wall?
Right, we're not gonna move the whole building, we're just, we're just taking out a piece instead.
Existence improvement, last assumption.
Yeah.
Yeah, within, right.
Okay. All right, go ahead then, I guess, coast site plans, I would.
And that's that.
Yeah, we, Marson, look at that, also site plan too.
For those things, variance application, okay. Sites under two. abolish existing replacement compliant. It's not really compliant, right?
I think she needs a building code wide, wise compliant.
The building goes for height. It's not compliant, that would sell.
Well, the letter that we got from you, Murray, say, saying that we received the DEP reports for, and there were no impacts on the Dudley property here.
Yeah. Yeah.
Did you wanna see the DEP check?
No. No, I've seen the, I, I guess, I guess because, you know, the fact that it says compliant on this thing is not really an issue because you, you told, you told the story in the actual application for variance. So what it said in there, that's.
So compliant, this is compli-, the coastal site plan could be for planning and zoning, it could be for ZDA. So compliant isn't for variance.
Coastal.
It's for coastal and, well, and she's just, right, so she's just speaking for compliance of, building compliant.
Okay.
Meaning by code, not zoning wise specifically. Yeah, because coastal site plan is not, you know, synonymous with just zoning board deals.
All right.
Any other questions by the board? Okay, any public comments from anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application?
Other than the applicant?
Any public comments wishing to speak opposing the application? Any further questions by the board? Is there any correspondence received into the record by name and date?
No, we did not receive anything for or against.
There any final comments from the applicant? Okay, I make a motion to close the public portion of the hearing and to deliberate the application.
Second.
Okay, that passes. Okay, who would like to speak first? State yours.
So I, I look at this as, you know, pretty clean cut reduction and non-conformity and should approve.
Good.
Yeah, it's, it's a tear down, a rebuild within the same footprint. We'll say within instead of on the exact same.
Yeah.
Which is a function of the non-conformity.
Right, yeah, so.
Yeah, I agree, I think it's some relatively important word. And I think like, the height increase was definitely necessary to comply with the building codes. So even like the, you know, even like the extension, but was necessary, maybe the case was a hard hit there too. But, yeah. But with the fact that there's, that they're, I'm reducing some of the properties, I think it makes it even clearer, so I would vote in favor of it.
Okay.
Okay, I make a motion to close the.
Wait a minute, I, I suggest that we cover coastal site plan in the same deliberation and we can move through with that.
Okay, fine.
Okay. Um, I, I, my comment on it is it just seemed to be that there's no impact.
Okay. All right.
Okay, now you can make your motion.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Now I make a motion to close the deliberation and, and request a motion to vote on the variance. Do I?
Second.
Okay. Who would like, I'll start, I would be in favor of it. Based, okay, so, okay, I'd make a motion to approve the variance on application twenty-four oh-four sixty-seven Dudley Lane. Guess I'll have to read the application. Young's Village, map thirty-one, lot forty-eight, zone R two, owner applicant Frank or Merlo and Deb Hawthorne. Variance requested to section twelve point six, expand a non-conforming structure. Application includes coastal site plan. On the basis of that, they're tearing down an old structure and they're entitled to carry, to carry forward to the new structure, the old variances because the previous footprint is the same as the footprint of the new structure. And also, there is a rea-, a reduction of non-conformities in the fact that you're tearing down the shed. All those in favor, or how do you prove?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye. All those against, well, we all approve it. Congratulations. And let's vote on the court, and I make a motion to vote on the coastal site plan. I make a motion to, uh, vote, yes, approve it.
Second.
Can you, um, on the basis that it's consistent with the goals and policies?
Oh, yeah, that's right. Okay, on the basis that, that, that it is consistent with the coastal site plan application is consistent with the goals and policies of the Coastal Management Act. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Motion passed, again, congratulations.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, I would like to make a motion, um, application twenty-four oh five. Thirty-one Horseman Avenue, I would, would like to make a motion to open and to continue the application until May fourteenth.
Second.
All those in favor?
Um, it's May fourteenth, but the main meeting, oh yeah, it's May fourteenth, yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, no, motion passed. Okay, we'll move on with application twenty-four oh six twenty-seven Fort, Fort Path Road. And who will be making the presentation?
My name is Tim Long, thirty-one Horseman Road, Madison. Hathi?
Oh, yeah.
Uh, Tim Long, thirty-one Horseman Road, Madison, friends with Richard and his owners. Okay, ready? Um, so, you'll see that this, um, this property, we received a variance to build the current house and garage in nineteen eighty-nine. The roadside is only seventy-five feet wide and the rear is just under sixty feet wide. Uh, the owners are trying to place a generator and propane tanks, um, for the house and we can't make the side yard setbacks for either the generator or the two propane tanks. So, um, we placed according to the, I think of the drawing, we placed the generator at the rear of the house, the, um, which would need a twenty-two foot side yard on the east side setback, um, and we put the propane tanks on the west side of the house, uh, along the driveway, uh, at the rear corner, they're the horizontal tanks, so they're only two feet ten high. And that's two tanks, um, I tried to stay consistent with the original variance that asked for a twenty-six foot setback on the west. Um, and then the generator, we had to push to the east a little bit, um, just to get the ten foot clearance that the propane tanks require from a source of ignition, so we had to spread them out a little bit, and that's why the generator went closer to the side yard and not center of the, rear of the house. I think that's the bulk.
Okay, we'll go through the application. Okay, twenty, six foot, thirty foot, you're going to twenty-two feet. On the east side. Reorient me, um, front of the house faces the side of the earth, sorry.
Well, yes, you, yeah, the front door, if you wanna call it the front door, because it's gate style, yes, the front door would face the west, northwest, yes.
I always think of that, front of the house.
Yeah, it is, yeah, it would go by the front door, yeah.
And that, but that spacing for the propane tanks is the reason why you would propane by the front door as opposed to.
Next to the generator?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can't put the, you need ten feet away, or wherever the, it's for the tank bounds on the propane tank, it needs to be ten feet away from the source of ignition, which the generator becomes.
By the time you did that, the other end of it would be.
There's a sliding door in the rear, but well, well, I would, the rear of the house, between the garage and the, and the house, there's a sliding door. So now we need to stay, you know, five feet away from the generator, ten feet away with the propane tanks. There's a lot of code nuances that we were trying to entertain. And we didn't put the propane tanks, currently there's a fifty gallon propane tank on the east side where there's the smallest setback. Um, we thought, get rid of it, not matter if I can bring everything as close to center of the lot as we could get.
Are they removing the propane tanks?
Yes, yeah, one on the, it, right now, there's currently one on the east side.
On the small?
Sliver, yeah, a sliver in the.
Just on this side?
Yeah, right there, there's a small fifty gallon that just serves the cooktop, so we're gonna remove that, and then they're gonna pipe the two new tanks to the cooktop.
So the one that's on the, the one that's on the east side?
Yep.
How close is that to the, I think you said it's ten?
Yeah, so that's a ten foot setback, so I would say it's about a foot and a half wide, so you're probably eight and a half feet from it.
And the new one is gonna be twenty feet back?
Twenty, so you're gonna be compliant from the east side, but now you're gonna be twenty-six feet away from the west side setback. Cause you're going to the other side of the house.
No, I'm just saying, can you call it a reduction in nonconformities?
Ah, well, so you're proving it on the east. Yeah, only good, what you got, zoning doesn't regulate a single tank, so a single tank can go anywhere.
Oh, okay.
Once you add the second tank, now it becomes regulated and we have to.
Okay.
And we can't do a single, we, so just so that you're aware, a hundred twenty gallons of propane will last about a day and a half with a generator running. So most, if not all propane companies, want you to get two because they're not coming every day and a half to fill it up, so they, they.
Especially since there's no power.
Yeah, yeah, and everybody filling everybody up, also that's why we get the two propane tanks, alright.
Okay. Okay, now, sometimes they bury these propane tanks?
Yeah, it, you, I don't know where we, it's there, it's, again, it's, it's, he's up on a hill, um, there's wedge.
Zoning doesn't regulate buried propane tanks, but the health department does, and then you're running into the fact that it has to be away from septic, ten feet off property line, so it's, yeah.
It's a whole other.
It's a whole other ball of.
They still allow buried tanks?
Propane, yes.
Yeah, propane. So, um, okay, would you wanna go over the coastal site plan application?
Did I bring the coastal site plan application up?
How far away is this?
We're a mile from the shoreline, we're not sure why we have to do.
Yeah.
So the, this, we have an imaginary line that we draw on a map and it falls in it and they're a mile away, um, to be hon, we didn't, we, we didn't even send it to.
The drawing said forty.
Four thousand fifty-two feet, line is moving, I mean, I put two lines, it's, that's, I just wanted to show.
So there's really no impact, obviously.
But before we approve it, we wanna review it.
Yeah, sure.
I don't wanna approve it without having gone through it.
No, 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 I agree.
Um, where are we looking, hold on.
Uh.
Right here, this one?
Description, side view, variance, sixty-four feet. And then, where I think you had your measurements there for the generator, it was less than sixty feet.
Yeah, so, again, I'm using very two survey off of the line that they have established, I'm coming up with sixty-one feet at the, at the rear of the house.
Still here.
You know, so, yeah, come on, click the gray line, I use the seventy-five foot on the front as my age, you know.
Okay.
Good.
On that seventy-five feet is that?
The seven, yeah, it's seven, seven angle, and then the lot is sort of.
Yeah.
Drop the British narrower as we go back.
Ridiculous lines would be less. So we decided coastal line. Keep going, there's nothing.
Yeah.
Applicable there.
We send it to, we send it to the state as courtesy, we don't necessarily have to.
All this stuff is not applicable.
They just make their recommendations if, you know, which you guys usually like, but this one wasn't, he hasn't, yeah, he hasn't been great about trying them quickly, so this one's so far away. Adverse impact.
Adverse impacts, okay, they said no adverse impacts, so, you know, that's.
And that's the distance, yeah.
Yeah, it's pretty far. Yeah.
Yeah, that area, there is nine ninety-five is the delineating line, maybe a straight line, I guess.
Is there any other questions by the board? Right here.
Yeah, so, you mentioned in your, um, like, on application that the hardship is like, uh, the pre-existing nonconforming lot shape, is, is that correct?
Well, I need, the hardship is, yeah, the size of the lot doesn't lend itself to, I, we're just sixty feet wide or less and makes it, so it's unusual, possible to have a thirty foot setback.
So it's unusually small for the end district, okay.
It was, it was actually rezoned, so when they, even though they needed a variance the first time they did, the zone changed, the setbacks changed. Setbacks were different at the time in nineteen eighty-nine, but they still needed a variance to do what they wanted to, mostly for, well, recovered setbacks, yeah. And so it got worse, actually.
Alright, enough of our questions.
Any other comments?
I'm here.
Okay, I can be bored, there any, uh, public comments from anybody wishing to speak in favor of the application?
There is. Nobody's raising a hand.
Nobody online, any public comments from anyone wishing to speak opposing to the application, okay, online? Further questions by the board? Uh, is there any correspondence to be introduced into the record?
No one submitted any letters in for or against.
Any final com, uh, uh, comments from the applicant?
That's her.
Okay, would like to, to make a motion to close the public portion of the hearing to deliberate the application?
Second.
Second. Okay, who would like to, uh?
All in favor?
Who would like to talk first, we have to deliberate.
Yeah, so, you made a motion, a second.
Yeah.
Now, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Sorry. Alright.
Okay, who would like to speak? First, either in favor or.
I don't, I, this is, this is a hardship type thing, there's no, there's no other place to put this thing, they don't have they don't have a good spot, it's accessible to the house, they don't have, um, you know, the ability to put it to, not able to put it close to the generator and nor can it block the doors, so they're, they're kinda stuck, so, it's a variance thing, this, this, the nature of, that's what happens when the lots are smaller and what the variance is basically built around. Minimum size, so.
Yeah, I concur, it's an unusual hardship to, to, to difficulty of the narrow lot with non, um, nonconformities of a pre-existing nonconforming lot. So I agree with Dennis.
That's good.
So.
I have this for thirty and thirty. Put it on a pole.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, the elevation now is slant wide, just distance, yeah.
So. I, I have to agree, and I think that shape and size of the lot creates a hardship in this case, because you can't really put like the propane tanks on anywhere else, it's really difficult to virtually call them health code and everything like that. So, I think in this case, there's a hardship kind of located here around the applicant.
Okay.
Okay.
I make a motion to.
Before you do, can we discuss the coastal site plans, and we don't have to.
Yeah, we can discuss, yes, if you'd like, sure.
Yeah, it, it's, it was a pro forma type, uh, inspection, they're far enough away that it doesn't, it's not really going to impact anything, and they did indicate you know, the, there's no, um, there's no impact there, so I, I don't see an issue with coastal site plan application.
Yeah. Anybody else would like to make a comment on the coastal site plan?
Current.
Uh, current, I'm also with Dennis on that. Deborah, are you?
Yes, I agree.
Alright, I would like to make a motion to either grant or grant with conditions or deny the, the variance and state the reasons for the record, who would like to, uh, who would like to make the motion?
Give me the add-on, sure. So, I make a motion to be approved, uh, variance application twenty-four oh six for twenty-seven Fort Path Road, um, where they request the variance to section three six D to allow twenty-six foot west where thirty foot is required for propane tanks, section three sixty to allow twenty-two foot east where thirty foot is required for the generator, generator, given that the, the generator and the tanks must be separated by code. And, um, I would like, uh, nominate, my, uh, motion is contingent that on all construction being in compliance to the plan submitted and by acceptance of conditions approved from planning zone.
All those in favor?
You just second.
Second.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I was, I'm getting ahead of myself. Okay, we have a second, right? Any discussion?
I think we already had, our discussions have done, yes, yeah.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, motion passed, congratulations.
Coastal, hold on, hold on a second.
And coastal site plan, do I make a, a motion?
Yeah.
On the coastal site plan?
I'd like to move, approve, uh, the coastal site plan, we for, uh, twenty-seven Fort Path Road, uh, given that the, the indicates there's no, uh, no impact and, you know, all of the, uh.
Consistent with the goals and policies.
All, all of the, uh, application is consistent with the goals, policies of the Coastal Management Act. I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, none, motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything else we have to bring up?
Nope, just three minutes.
Okay. Do, do we have a copy of the minutes, or?
No, they were, they're always linked into the.
Oh, okay.
You could do them, or you can, you can push them, your, your choice if you want to table them, or you wanna approve them.
No.
Did anybody read them?
I didn't, no, you don't, so.
Dylan wasn't, I don't think he's seated, so you can't, you can't vote on them, right, because you weren't seated.
I was present, I'm not sure of that.
I think, I think, because he was present, he can.
Alright, can I make a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting?
Yeah.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, no, motion passed.
No discussion? Anybody have discussion, no discussions? Good.
Off the record.
We, yeah, okay, a discussion, make a motion, anybody want a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting of April ninth, zoning board deals.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, no, motion.